Let's call the meeting to order.
Where's this guy?
We are at the Council Chambers, City Hall of Marshalltown, 10 West State Street. The time is 5:30 PM and the date is March 25, 2019. Notice to the public, the mayor and council will welcome comments from the public on discussing any agenda item. You're required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit the time used for, to present your remarks to about three minutes so that others may be given an opportunity to speak. Speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any consular specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, for those who are able, please stand for the pledge.
The pledge that leads into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom's absent. Lamer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Gowdy's absent. Fiver present.
Very good. While we have a quorum, let's go ahead and have our meeting. Keep Mr. Gowdy in your thoughts. He's, he has no voice today, so he couldn't participate. It is time now for any mayor and administrator comments, if anyone chooses to make any. Seeing nobody rushed to a microphone or raise a hand, I will say that I got a picture today from Jake Rowley showing the Nebraska sign as he's taking his truck over to Omaha to help on the flood relief. And over the weekend, a lot of people donated a lot of food and money to the recovery for the flood over there. And it's, it's a testament to the people of Marshalltown. We were the beneficiary of that kind of stuff last July, and it was fun to see the town get together and rally and help out another area that's been affected by a natural disaster. At this, are we doing the years of service?
There's none of present tonight.
Oh, we do have one. Okay, good. Come on up, please.
I'm Bob Rant, Superintendent of War Police Patrol Plan. Wouldn't recognize Randy Daniel for forty years of service with the city of Marshalltown. Put that in perspective. I was five when.
You had to say that, didn't you, Bob?
I'd like to point that out. It makes me feel younger. So, but Randy's been a-
He still acts that way sometimes.
Ah, yeah.
You just got fired.
And a, an operator. He was a third shift night operator for many years, and now, past couple of years, he switched back to a maintenance operator. But one of our go-to maintenance guys, we have the advantage that when he goes to dig up a utility in the plant, he probably got it buried in there in the first place.
All right.
Does a great job for us, and we appreciate it. Here's his service.
Very good. So do we. Thank you. Okay, on to the consent agenda. Item F and under that, number one, approved council minutes and bill list. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Isom, there's absence, excuse me. Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Carrie, madam clerk, would you read those items, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Approve the council minutes of March 11 and the bill list of $1,528,867.35. Recede the Civil Service Commission new hire list for transit operator and transit mechanic. Appoint Michelle Busby to the Plan Zoning Commission. Term expires April 1st, 2022. Approve renewal tree trimmer's license for Cody's Tree Service LLC. Resolution approving a contract for transit services with the city and the Iowa Department of Human Services. Approve alcohol license renewals, The Spot, The Perfect Setting, Tremont on Main, Mi Ranchito, Mexican Grill and Seafood, and Zeno's Pizza.
Thank you. And on to item G, motions. Would you read the first such motion, please?
Sure. Your, Your Honor, we have two new liquor license applications. The first for Hall of Fame concession, Class BB, and that's out of the concession stand, South Sixth Street. This is a six-month license with the transfer of the Class B license to a shed during, at the west end of the concession, right, west end of the Sapa field, with Class C at concessions for event during May 10 through 14, and approval of a Class C license for the May 10, 14 event. So that's actually three actions for this Hall of Fame concessions. And the second is for a Class C liquor license at the Wandering Creek Golf Course. And both Joel Court and Allison Grubbsner is here to speak of it.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And then on to item H, resolutions, and would you read the first one, please?
Resolution approving fees at the Marshalltown compost facility.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
I will move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Good evening. Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. Several meetings ago, we discussed the business model of the sale of bags at our compost facility and how it was no longer cost beneficial for us to be in the sale of bags. That being said, we still have a supply down there that we will intend to use this year. And so, as such, we wanted to make sure that we modified the fees. So, for the public's knowledge and for the councils, starting with this modification, you will pay $1 for the bag when you purchase, and you will pay $1 when you bring it through the gate for disposal, regardless if it has the Marshalltown logo or not. We didn't want to try and guess halfway through the year or, or have anyone upset halfway through the year when the business model changed. So we're making this change prior to the opening. And then probably what the press and the public cares most about, we are anticipating a compost facility opening next Monday, April 1st. Are there any questions I can answer regarding the fees?
Looks like it does not engender any questions. Any public comment?
I have one comment, one question. What are you going to do with all the ground-up trees?
The, the tree disposal that's come in from the tornado-related has already been hauled mostly hauled away. We did find a company that was willing to take them for no cost, which, in my quick analysis, was saving the city money. To the best of my knowledge, that company takes them over to somewhere in Story County and makes pallets with, with the wood chips and glue, pressed pallets out of them. So, most of the tornado debris has been hauled away. We're hoping we can continue that agreement to take away what wasn't tornado debris because we have a pretty significant pile of, of wood chips down there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's, let's vote.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Carrie, very good. Thank you. Would you read item resolution two, please?
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the award of contract for the manhole and point repair project in the amount of $3,848,272.45.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the city clerk read the low bid for the 2017 manhole and point repair project, council may remember that this is a sanitary sewer repair at many, many locations throughout the city, I think in upwards of 100 or 120. We did open bids on March 5th. We received three bids. The low was from Construct Incorporated, a local company here in Marshalltown. It was at about 3%, 3.5% higher than our engineer's estimate. And in reviewing those numbers with Fox Engineering, my best guess, best belief and discussion with the contractor is that the contractor put some, put more value to the logistics of how the project gets done maybe than what we could estimate. They do anticipate they'll use several crews, two, three, four. They'll work on multiple tracks and manage multiple crews that are out there working. But after analysis, we do recommend that we do not accept the bid alternates, that we do accept the low base bid from Construct in the amount of $3,848,272.45. And I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
Any consular questions?
Justin, could you review the timing of this project?
Yes, certainly, Consular Weren. Construction would start sometime probably in the next 30 to 60 days. It's going to be at multiple locations, so it's going to be difficult for anyone who's not working on the project on a daily basis to know exactly where they are. But I would tell the council, by all means, contact my office, and we'll do our best to, to get you informed on that. Construction is probably going to take on the order of a year and a quarter to a year and a half. I believe if we start in, let's say, May of 2019, we would intend to wrap up before roughly Thanksgiving of 2020. So it is a long project, as kind of referenced by the amount, and a, like I said, multiple-location project. Does that answer your question, Bethany?
Yes, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Justin?
Yeah, you might, you might talk about the overrun, how you're going to pay for it.
Yes. So the, the base bid was $3,848. The council may remember that we intend to borrow about 3.5% from the state revolving fund. So the remaining $348,000 would come from our fund balance in the sanitary sewer. I know you've spoken up before, Consular Lamer, that we have a pretty healthy balance. This would be an option for us to spend down some of the cash.
We, are we doing the inspection?
Fox Engineering will be providing the inspection. We, I can't remember how long ago we approved that amendment to their contract. This would be another one where I do intend for our new employee, the, the construction inspector, to help out where we can, but we do already have Fox Engineering under contract to perform those services.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Justin, can you explain on the bid alternative number three, the negative numbers there?
Sure. So bid alternative number three was using asphalt versus using concrete or, or using a composite where they use concrete and then they cap it with asphalt. The alternate three was for concrete, the full depth. I'm still holding the line right now in that we have enough of a patchwork quilt out there in our streets that I am trying not to set the example for others that they can use concrete full depth. I still want to get an asphalt cap for a continuous surface of asphalt out there. So in this case, I, I am going with using that asphalt cap in lieu of taking the, let's see, subtraction to the, the total amount.
Thank you.
And that's primarily to set the precedent with utilities to dig in our right-of-way that all would prefer that I allow them to only pour back concrete. It saves them effort and time and money, but saves, but creates headaches for us with pavement maintenance.
Other consular questions? Public comment or questions? This could be a fast meeting. Roll call, please.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Carrie, very good. Thank you. Would you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution approving purchase of firearms simulator training equipment for use in the police department.
I move for approval.
Any second?
I'll second.
Come on.
Good evening. Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department. A little disclaimer, I'm battling an eye infection, so if I look at you weirder than normal, please don't overreact to my facial expressions. And Roger, if I wink at you, it's not personal. My eyes, the light in this room has been bugging me today. So, when we designed a new police facility, one of the rooms that we built in the facility was a firearms training simulator room. In our profession, training is extremely important to what our officers do every day, and having realistic scenario-based training is invaluable. And we can't get enough of it. And without this type of equipment, it becomes very expensive for us to, to try to do it in a more traditional manner, like when I first started 25 years ago, where you get a bunch of people together and try to put together some scenarios. That can be very expensive, and we can't do very much of it. A simulator machine allows us to enhance our training probably 1,000 times, quite frankly, and allows us to conduct more training than, than I could ever imagine doing without the simulator equipment. So we've, staff has been investigating different options for equipment over the last year, and they come, we come to you with this recommendation to purchase a Milo Range Pro System Simulator, firearms simulator training system to be used in the new building. As you can see, it's quite expensive. It's $76,860. Currently, as of March 6th, anyway, we had just under $41,000 left in our furniture fixtures and equipment budget for the new building. But we also have a healthy surplus of about $1.3 million in the, in the total project budget. So staff is recommending that we purchase this simulator equipment. We would use the remaining $40,835 out of the FFNE budget, and then we would dip into the surplus to pay the remain, remainder of the budget. Making sure that our officers have proper training, realistic training, and can, can hone their decision-making skills is vitally important. And we ask our officers to do a lot of dangerous things on a daily basis, and I believe that this equipment would allow us to make sure that we're doing the right things for our, our officers in terms of the training that they're receiving. And obviously, this would enhance the, the services that we provide to the community and, and enhance safety overall for our community. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You answered a bunch of questions this afternoon when we had the dignitaries from five different foreign countries comparing police forces and that sort of thing. And it was kind of fun to hear you talk about how the community had stepped things up for the, for the police department, but also interesting that we have to compete with Des Moines and other cities to get officers here. So I'm assuming that this kind of thing would be a recruitment tool along with the new building that, by God, we're going to move into pretty soon.
As we've discussed a couple of times in the past, this new facility is going to be not only a great recruitment tool, but a retention tool as well. But having this type of training technology and, and availability for our staff is, is going to help us as well in recruiting and retaining quality police professionals.
Any consular questions or comments?
My only comment is that I think it's a great idea, and I think we need to do this. And if we need to take some of the extra money out, if we need to take it all out of the surplus, I don't care. If we can put $50,000 worth of art in there, we can put $70,000 to take care of our police department.
I see other heads nodding affirmatively. Public comment. Let's vote.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Carrie, again. Good. On to the last resolution, number four. Would you read that, madam clerk?
Resolution approving a contribution of $5,000 to the Marshalltown Fourth of July Fireworks Celebration.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
How about this?
Second.
Any discussion? Public comment? Roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Carrie, very good. On to item I, ordinances. Would you read the first one, please?
Yes, Your Honor. We have a public hearing and the third reading of the ordinance 14980, approving changes to the Marshalltown zoning ordinance of 2010 regarding Chapter 29 table of permitted and special uses for commercial and industrial districts. And this was amended on February 25th and then amended back to the original recommendation from the Plan Zoning Commission on March 11.
Is there, oh, I guess we need to declare the public hearing open now at 5:50 PM. Were any written comments received by the clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, we received three that are included in the packet.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? Anyone from staff to review it?
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. As clerk read, this is an ordinance, third reading, related to our regional commercial district and the allowance of personal storage units on the interior of the building is how the ordinance is currently presented before you for the third reading. As we discussed in previous meetings, we've had changes between what would, might be allowed on the exterior of a site in the regional commercial district. Plan Zoning Commission recommendation was to allow for the interior and to not allow for the exterior of buildings in regional commercial districts. So that's what's before you at this time.
Thank you. Any consul comments?
Your Honor? I'd like to offer a motion to postpone a final vote for, for the third reading until the next meeting, so that basically all counselors will participate, be able to fully participate.
Is there a second to that motion?
No, no, no.
Second.
Oh, that's right. Public hearing, sorry.
With a public hearing.
Yeah, we're still in the hearing. We probably need to declare the public hearing closed and then entertain that motion.
Okay.
And let's declare it closed now at 5:52 PM.
Your offright, Your Honor, I also offer that amendment at this time.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Why, why are we doing this?
What I heard Mr. Martin say was that he wanted a full complement of consulars when that vote comes up.
We're only short. Okay.
Yeah, we're short two.
They both, they both voted the same way on it, so.
Any other consular comment? Public comment? I'm not sure. This is a debatable motion, actually. I should have taken that class in college. What's the?
Not debatable?
It's not debatable? Yeah. Yeah, I would have flunked. Let's call the roll on the motion to table.
Hoop?
No.
Lamer?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
No.
Motion failed.
Move to approve the ordinance as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comment by consulars? Public comment? Roll, oh, sorry.
Randy Dixon, U-Haul Company in Iowa. Just so I understand where we stand now, the motion is to approve it without the exterior buildings? Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So the instructions I've been given is if that's the inclination, we would like to make a motion to table it for further consideration.
I'd probably have to ask our city council if that's permissible. I think the motion has to come from up, up here.
I think that's out of order, Your Honor.
Yeah. And, and if no, no one up at the council table does make that motion, I think we're going to have to vote.
Okay.
More public comment?
Karen Gregory, Martha Valentine Foundation, also co-chair of Vision Marshalltown. As the letter had indicated from Vision Marshalltown, we work diligently to make sure that the aesthetics of our community are outstanding. It helps develop the community pride. We're thrilled that U-Haul is looking at bringing the business here, and we know that they will be a great partner. But this is beyond just U-Haul because the ramifications would potentially allow others that would not be as perhaps attentive to the aesthetics as we know U-Haul will. So this is nothing against U-Haul, but it is everything about making sure that Marshalltown does not lower our standards and that we make sure the aesthetics of our community remain high. Please consider that seriously. Thanks.
Thanks, Karen. Any other public comment? Let's call the roll.
Hoop?
No.
I, Lamer?
Nope.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Motion failed because, I believe, because we had three yeses, two no's, and two absent. Is that the way it goes?
That's my understanding.
Your Honor, it's my understanding that on ordinances that a majority of the council, meaning four, have to vote either to deny or approve any change. Am I correct?
Yes.
So this would be a failing of the third reading at this point, so.
Mr. Mayor, I think what we can do is we can, one of us in the no, if you, at the next meeting, could ask for, to have it reconsidered, as long as we were voting in the negative part of the vote. So we can bring it up. It should be on the next agenda. I don't know how you do that, but I, I think they need to vote on it. They need to know where they're going to go, so we need to vote on the thing, and it's either up or down. So.
So, Lamer?
I would be willing, I would be willing, at the next meeting, to entertain, to offer a motion to reconsider since I'm on the negative side of the vote.
That's my understanding of how it operates.
I would be willing.
So may I place in the minutes that Lamer offered to reconsider on April 8?
I think the minute should just show that the motion was denied, and it will be, it will be placed on the next agenda, and we can do it then.
That works for me.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And it is effectively tabled. Let's go to the second public hearing, if you would.
We have a public hearing and third reading of ordinance 14981, approving changes to the zoning ordinance of 2010 regarding Chapter 19, Traditional Neighborhood District and Res zoning properties at 108, 110, 112, and 114 North Third Avenue from R4 Medium Density Residential to Traditional Neighborhood.
Is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. We're in the public hearing. So I declare it's open. It's one minute to 6:00 PM. Any written comments received by the clerk?
No, Your Honor.
Any public comments?
Gary Thompson, 601 East Main. I'm going to ask you, as a council, to table this one until next week because I think there's a point of order here. I think you're getting a little ahead of yourselves from looking at the plan. And let me back up. I support Shane and Chris Eckler and all small business owners. I really am behind them in what they want to do, but the way the plan is written, they're using a public alley as their driveway. And if you approve this tonight, I think you're setting a precedent now that if this alley doesn't get vacated to them or to a neighboring property and they're able to use it, now you're going to say the city, the taxpayers are going to plow their driveway for them, or you're going to force them to plow a public right-of-way, which I think is illegal. So only Roger knows that. So I don't know if you can approve this tonight as a third reading, and I'm asking you not to, unless you come back with a- you not to, unless you come back with a, I'd like to see you come back with a resolution on next meeting that lets the Ecklers buy the alley, vacate the alley and let them buy it for a dollar, and approve that resolution first, and then approve the third reading of the ordinance, because honestly, I'm not sure you can do this, grant them public access to that. But then again, Joel, you're the lawyer. Maybe I'm wrong. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Down on, on Main Street, just before Third Avenue, on the south side, about halfway through the block, the medical supply store, they use the alley for their driveway, don't they? So we, we have people already doing that, I think, in town.
I don't know, but I know somebody who does.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. So the, the ordinance before you is a result of a, is a rezoning of the particular parcels involved and an amendment to the text language of the traditional neighborhood. To be real frank, a rezoning doesn't have anything to do with their particular site plan or their proposal even, when we're talking about a rezoning effort, because we could rezone this property and Ecklers could decide not to pursue that site. I'm not saying that's what's happening, but somebody else could come in and utilize that site in a different way that's compliant with the code. So the alley situation and access situation is a site development issue, which obviously needs to be worked through on an administrative level as we deal with permits and those types of things, not really specific to a rezoning of a property as being in connection with your comprehensive plan and our Highway 14 study and those kind of things that we've, we've talked about from a planning perspective. So I would say to not necessarily consider all of the specifics of what their particular site is entailed, as much as, does this zone, is that appropriate for the area, is it in, is it consistent with our planning efforts, and are the amendment changes supported? And so I know that's sometimes hard to separate when we talk about sites and we have a potential developer right in front of us talking about an area, but that is, that is a key important piece to think about when we're doing that. Certainly, we do have businesses, as Mr. Lamer just mentioned, that do use alleys as we do with personal residences who use alleys as public access. They are a public access point, and so those are things that would be considered with any site development, especially in our downtown, as we talk about, you know, access points and along the Highway 14 corridor, as we talk about access management and things of that nature. So that's definitely a topic that we will discuss on a site development type of issue, but the ordinance before you is really talking about the zoning of the parcels and the text within that district.
And consistent with the master plan that the, is it FEH was recommending?
For their entrance, too, don't they?
Certainly consistent with the Highway 14 study, which we just completed and accepted in June and talking about changing that corridor, consistent with that, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other councilor or public comment?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So Traditional Neighborhood is just a modified version of mixed use, and you're trying to amend Traditional Neighborhood to fit this particular application where mixed use would fit it just fine, other than Traditional Neighborhood tries to control how you develop the property more than mixed use does. And I'll just say another thing, Mr. Thompson said sell him the alley for a dollar. I'm going to remind you that a family wanted to purchase an alley on Seventh Avenue earlier this year or last year, and Ms. Kinzer told them to pay fair market value for the ground, so you might want to think about that policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Time for roll call, or no, time to go out of the, no, time to do a staff review. We've kind of already done that. We've done council comments. If you have any other staff review, fine, and other than that, let's declare the public meet. It really is going to take me four full years to figure out how to do these public hearing steps. It is now 606, and I declare the public hearing is over. And with that, is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
I will move to approve the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good, carried. And now we are at the discussion and public comment phase. At this phase, members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. Approach the mic, state your name and address, limit your comments to three minutes unless more time is allowed by yours truly. The speaker shall direct comments to the mayor and council as a whole. Mayor and council, you shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken at, on items raised in public comments in order to comply with the open meetings laws. With that said, the microphone is open.
Anna Wolvers, 213 Thomas Drive. And I missed the very first part of this, so I apologize if it's already been said, but I want to do a huge community thank you and shout out for the support and overwhelming love and Midwestern graciousness to give back to the friends in Western Iowa and Nebraska. Lee and Mark Mitchell and myself were with Jake and Ally until about 10:30, loaning bottles of water and toilet paper and toiletries, so much so that we filled Jake's trailer and needed to recruit. Mr. Mulford came through, I didn't even know who he was, and I was, he's like, "How can I help?", and I was like, "Actually, if you had a trailer, that would be awesome." And so he had a trailer and truck, so we just thank you for the, the young visionaries and people giving back. We appreciate that. And I want to do a personal thank you to Mr. Hoop. There was a thread about potholes, and I put some pictures on my half-block that had about 25, and they were fixed within a day and a half, and it's much safer in that neighborhood, so thank you for paying attention and keeping those safety first before beauty with our patchwork quilt out there.
We consider up here, the coaches are a pothole and street guy. He just is, and it was pretty cool yesterday at, at Ivy. The monetary contributions, the both doors, had people coming in and out. The non-speaking community was really good at donating, too. I mean, it was just cool.
I think it helped having the mayor and the sheriff hand them a paper. They thought they had to just say yes.
I don't know. It, it was, it was another good example of how the people of this town, if you have a good idea and the right people, it, it just takes off, and it was fun to get the picture that Jake posted on social media today. Welcome to Nebraska.
And they're still taking donations.
Still taking donations?
Jeff Linton and online.
That's right, yeah, the Jeff Linton office and online. Very good. Thank you for that public comment. Any other public comment? She's just faster than you are, Gary.
Sarah Resumum, Library Director. I'd just like to tell you, we have two great events coming up this Saturday at the library. Two o'clock in the big room, Iowa's Lost History from the Titanic, a wonderful program that talks about the, the ties that Iowa had to the Titanic and that lost ship, and it's a great historic program, free, open to the public. And then Saturday night, the Friends of the Library are helping to celebrate our 10th anniversary. We have a great event going on at Van Gogh's, our wonderful new event center down in town, from five to eight. There is a $40 fee for tickets, and, but I would urge you to sign up by tomorrow on Event, or if you're not sure, call me at the library. But it's a great opportunity to celebrate the library, and we're going to have some wonderful silent auction, including some fabulous autograph books, including Diana Gabadon's Outlander for all of you Outlander fans out there, so I hope you think about coming to the library for one or both of our programs this weekend. Thank you.
The, the one last week was really fascinating, too, about the Iowa farms of years past, and well attended. That library just rocks. It just does. Gary.
Gary Thompson, 601 East Main. In spite of Sarah's hatred towards me, yes, the library does rock. In spite of who the director is, the library does rock. They have great staff there, in spite of who the director is, but, you know, the selfish woman that ran me over to get up here. Hey, seriously, though, I have a request. Before the, the police fire station gets finished, and I know it's not too late to do this, I know on record it's listed as 909 South Second Street, is that right? Okay, 909 South Second Street. We have a golden opportunity to have that building's address be 911 South Second Street, and I, you know, it's simple paperwork with the post office. I don't think it's going to cause any problems for contractors and stuff, but before it gets done, please direct someone to change the address to 911. I think it's a great way to honor our great public servants, you know, and plus the history of, obviously, of the date, so I'm asking for that. I don't ask for much, Joel.
I think it's a great idea.
And Roger, I did wink at you. Thanks.
Any other public comment?
One more, sorry. And I don't mean to end on a sour note, I'm just going to ask a question. I noticed that the city council meetings are being deleted from the YouTube channel, and they've deleted everything from 2016 to 2018, and I was wondering what the motivation was there, and do we have to put in a public request to get them? Can we get them put back up? What? Anyways.
Thanks. I'd have no clue myself. All right, seeing no one else rushing to the microphone as fast as Gary Thompson, let's call, call the meeting over at 6:12 PM. We're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you.